Okay, Chris, so it's six o'clock if you want me to get rolling. Chris still there?
I'm still here. Go ahead if you'd like.
Okay, hi, everybody. 6:00 PM, September 8th, Village Board Meeting tonight. For those attending by public, you're automatically muted and I can unmute you if you want to participate. There is a public comment section, so any items whether on or not on the agenda, you'll be allowed to participate and make comments. There's a raise hand function on Zoom, or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. For board members and presenters, you're muted automatically and try to remain muted if you can unless you're participating. And then other than board members, also please mute your video unless you're participating. And then with our discussion, President Zellner will call on board members to raise hand for comment, literally raise hand for comment, and then all votes will be done by roll call. So with that, I'll turn it over to President Zellner.
Okay, I'm gonna call this Village Board Meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Nyla Frye, here. Gary Hertzberg, here. Erin Moran. Bill Random.
Here.
Kristen Rungy, here. Phil Williams.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here. Okay, and first thing we have is confirmation of meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on September 3rd. The final agenda was posted at all three Village Posting locations on September 3rd. The final agenda and packet were also made available on September 3rd.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything called or I'd look for a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Kristen Rungy, second by, I think, second by Bill Random. First there, any other comments? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
I'll do roll call.
Oh, roll call vote. Sorry, go ahead.
Nyla Frye, aye. Kristen Rungy, aye. Phil Random, aye. Chris Zellner, aye. Phil Williams, aye. Gary Hertzberg, aye. Motion passes.
Okay, next we have public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board on issue that's on or off the agenda this evening? If you do, please raise your hand in the participants, or if any board members like to comment, they can too. Todd, I'll turn that over to you.
Yeah, I see two people in as attendees. Also, a couple of attendees are actually in the group on a different subject. But Ellen and Jennifer, you'll be able to speak during your scheduled item if you need to. So, any of those attending care to raise their hand? No hands, Chris, at this point.
Okay, see, now we'll move on then. First item we have is licenses and permits discussing taking action on original alcohol beverage license application for QuickTrip. Doing businesses QuickTrip 1059. Caitlin?
Yes, it is. Included in your packet is a request from QuickTrip. They are opening a new store on Water Wheel Drive. This is on the east side of Highway Q. This application has been received and reviewed by the police department and is recommended for approval. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, raise a hand if anybody has any comments. Welcome, Erin. I see you on the screen there. Okay, seeing no comments, I'd look for a motion, please.
Move approval of QuickTrip license application.
Motion by Phil Williams, second by Gary Hertzberg. Any other comments? Raise your hand, please. Roll call vote, Caitlin.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, then under new business, we have discussion and update regarding COVID-19 pandemic. Todd?
Well, Brian, do you want to touch base on this? You've seen it before. Brian assembled the resolution.
I think this was a different agenda.
Discussion, Todd. Any updates with regards to COVID?
Oh, did I jump too far? Oh, there wasn't a, there wasn't a, yes, thank you. I was looking at the agenda packets scrolling through. I didn't see memo, which is probably my fault. Let me just change my background because I want to show you a few things. And actually, the right people are on the line too with Jennifer and Ellen because the village has been working together. Okay, there we go. To do, with them to do a number of things. So businesses, I think 300 of these, and I always say it wrong, but it's, what's the right terminology, Jennifer or Ellen?
Business support pack.
Business support pack. And we put together something like 300 of these, right?
Yes.
And it all relates to the theme that's been assembled as a logo. So they get their bottle of hand sanitizer. I heard it's a good idea to put a few drops of essential oil in there so it smells better. A mask with logo. And then the big part is sort of theming the signage. So hopefully, as people go around the village, they'll start to see these, yes, we're open, or face mask required. Face mask required signage that was sort of familiar as people with a common brand. And then more stickers and a window, stickers and a window cling. These stickers, I think, are being used in a lot of shops to put on the bags, on the bags that are going out with product. Right, Jennifer?
That is correct. We have them currently, like Culvers is using them instead of tape to put receipts on. Papa Murphy's has them. Lone Girls putting them on takeaway. There are several shops on Main Street putting them on their bags. We have about, about half of the 13, sorry, half of the 30 million, 30, let me start that again. Half of the 30,000 stickers are out with shops right now, being circulated around the community.
Yeah, so nice job, Jennifer and Ellen, the chamber and the partnership. We're doing a lot of good things and more fun to come. They had a call earlier with Jennifer. There's going to be some fun marketing coming out to attract people to our community. As I mentioned before about Pretzel the Goat, I can attest that Pretzel was a star. He did a wonderful job trotting around Main Street. So the other update I have, and then I want to turn over to Scott to see if there's any COVID health related things he'd like to share on what's going on around the region. But I had a meeting today with about 12 different people from the community who represent different organizations that serve the public in one way or another, including the medical board, police department, the school district, social workers, Chamber of Commerce, a couple of churches, the senior center, St. Vincent de Paul, both the store as well as the St. Vincent de Paul Conference that does the charitable, charitable assistance for individuals. And we talked about what is being recognized by a lot of these groups as increased pressure on people who have some of the most concerning needs. As assistance programs have served well over the past few months, those programs are starting to, starting to dwindle in their own ability to support programs. And what we're seeing, what is being seen is that those, those in our community of highest risk are starting to feel, feel the impact even more. And the worry we have is a collection of groups is what those impacts will be on us as a community as a whole and how we as a community can best be prepared to address them and to connect people with the best resources that are available at any given time. So besides, all I want to do with this is to inform you, the Village Board, that, and as you'd probably expect, things are going to get quite a bit worse before they get better. And at least a worry of mine and those I spoke with today is that those in our community in the most challenging of positions will be most impacted. And that we're talking about it, and we're looking to coordinate, organize, communicate, and be ready to be of service as best we can. With that, Scott Russell, do you want to pop in and fill us in on some things that you're hearing from the region?
Sure, thanks, Todd. First of all, a big thanks to everybody that's taken all these initiatives to help out because you're right. It's gonna get worse before it gets better, especially as we roll into flu season. I'm sure everyone saw the news flashes over the weekend regarding the highest day of positive tests we've had yet. One thing to remember is we have an influx of college students in the area now. So while that is going to boost the numbers up, it also means that we have that many more people coming to town with the virus. It's going to be more rampant as we start heading into these colder weather months. We are starting to head into the flu season now. I do want to urge everybody to go out and get your flu shots. I know there's a lot of people that don't get them on a regular basis. The number is somewhere around 41 or 42% in Wisconsin is all that gets a flu shot. The big concern is the hospitals and the medical community trying to deal with the influx of flu patients along with the influx of COVID patients that we're going to be seeing this flu season. So definitely get out and get your flu shot where you can. As far as the actual local area in our EMS district, we fortunately are not seeing our positive cases increase as far as the cases we transport. Unfortunately, we're also not seeing them decrease as well. We're seeing about the same number of positives each week that were taken into the hospital. They're just different patients as we go along. So it's definitely still out there. Keep being diligent with your masks, cleaning, being careful of not going out and hanging out with groups, those kinds of things. I'm kind of interested to see what the Labor Day weekend is going to bring both the state and the county for numbers. It's going to be kind of hard to point it back exactly to the weekend, but this is a weekend I know a lot of us have been worried about and what kind of numbers we're going to get coming back from this one. That's about all that I have as far as numbers in that go. Unfortunately, everybody sees the numbers before we even get them anymore in our circles. The news has been so quick lately. But I think as far as anything deeper, I'm going to turn this over. Bill, do you have any info from your world to share?
We are still getting cases at a pretty even pace. We expect a group of cases to come out of the college. The question is whether they'll come home or not. You know, if the college is sending them home, that's probably going to be a problem. It's to us, I expect it to go through the winter and hopefully, and we do expect the vaccine to work. It looks like it works. It's just that we're probably looking at January, February, March. And we expect it to be a three-year thing, which I think we talked to Scott before. So, thanks.
Thanks, Dr. Random. Other than that, that's really all I have unless Todd or anybody else has anything to share.
Any questions from the board on our, from the staff team here? Or for the staff from the board?
Go ahead, Nyla.
I have a question, but I don't know exactly when to ask it. I'm wondering if there's any possibility that the board can start having in-person meetings, perhaps at the community center where it's a bigger area. I know that we're going to have a public hearing possibly coming up. I just feel that it's important that we have good communication and in-person communication is better than video communication. That's my opinion, but that's what I'm wondering.
So I think from a COVID perspective, we could discuss this one. Brian, if I'm wrong, tell me, but since that's what's on the agenda right now, we can't be here too far off of it. But COVID-related would be, I would assume, that's why we're on Zoom. I think from a social distancing standpoint, we could do it potentially. Depends on the length of time as well as how many people. I think we still have some limitations on how many people we could have in for a public hearing. I guess I'll open that up to Brian. What are your thoughts?
I would say we need to, the first thing we would need to do is take a closer look to see how the Dane County order impacts us. I can tell you that when the state had issued its order back in March and maybe even the second one in April, that there was a clear exception for municipalities when it came to our meetings. It's a little less clear whether or not Dane County has an exception of that nature. But even if you assume that we can have it, then I think that your comments are appropriate where, and Nyla's comment is appropriate too, where I don't think you could do it at the village hall. You would have to do it at a much larger area because you'd have to make sure that there was social distancing and you'd likely have to make sure that everyone was wearing masks too. But I think the first question is what impact, if any, is there an exception for municipal board meetings under the Dane County order?
Thank you.
Bill, do you have any comments on that? What your thoughts are on having a meeting like that?
Well, we know from the hospital and exposure stuff is that if you are wearing masks and if you are wearing goggles and if you are staying far enough away, nobody is at the hospital level has had any transmission. So it seems like the precautions work. It's just a matter of, can we arrange that? Can we arrange the space? Can you arrange the, I mean, can we talk with face masks? Can you do goggles? I mean, that's the, is that still social communication? I don't know. I mean, it seems to work. I think me and Nyla have been on the fire meetings where we're pretty well spaced out and it seems to work really well in that setting, in that room. And I've been at the school board meeting where they spaced us and we all had, I mean, had the gear and it worked pretty well in that room. So I would say we should, we could probably do it if it's, if Brian thinks that we can legally do it.
I'd also mention that I haven't spoken to her yet, but my wife did have her first day back in school today with her first grade class. So I'll be curious to see how that was. And I know they worked very hard to be able to social distance. She only has 11 kids in there at one time, so, you know, in a full-size classroom. So I don't, I don't think our chambers will work well anywhere there is an effect. But I do think that potentially we could look at maybe going into the library and/or Village Center rooms. Yes, Nyla, go ahead.
I think if we're going to look at possibilities, we should do it soon because I believe there is a timeframe that we can get reimbursed for materials that we use and that may be, you know, those materials might be something that can be reimbursed through the COVID-19 Emergency Care Act. So that's just a suggestion.
I guess I would, I guess I would just add if that's, if that's heading back to business as usual, which, except for maybe buying goggles or other face masks supplies. I'm not sure what else we could capture in the program, but go ahead, Nyla.
Would you have to do plexi glass between, depending on where seating is for board members? Would you have to do, like you did in your offices?
Well, I think we would want to use a larger space that affords us the luxury of being able to spread out. So we would not have to make those sorts of investments.
Okay, just wanted to check.
Brian, did you have a comment still?
Yeah, just one other thing to add that if, you know, if the Village Board, if the village moves in this direction, the other thing to keep in mind is no matter how big the facility is, you're likely going to have to have this set up such that even if you have an in-person meeting that members of the public can still watch on Zoom, let's say. Because we just, we don't know how many people are going to show up. And particularly if there's a public hearing, it may be the case that so many people from the public would want to comment or appear, but they would not be permitted within the facility because of spacing limitations. And so that's just another wrinkle to keep in mind as part of this.
Okay, any other comments? And board members, Gary Hertzberg?
Todd, I'd like you to at least talk to your peers. You know, I don't want to be the only community in Dane County that's holding in-person meetings. And maybe, you know, it puts other communities in a tough position. Why aren't you holding open meetings? I'd kind of like you to have that discussion with your peers to make sure we're not doing something that goes against what Dane County's trying to accomplish here.
Yeah, Brian and I can, I'll research that. Brian can research the legal end and we can report back. I certainly would hope for us to err on the side of caution to the extent that we can. I do know that it's a mixed bag in terms of what communities are doing. I've seen some that have changed very little during the entire, the entire pandemic. And others I've heard have said they have no intention of going back to in-person meetings until vaccination is well, well underhand. I guess I'd ask Brian, Brian, do you know off the top of your, or what have you witnessed in terms of council and board meetings?
The other communities that I work with are all doing meetings via Zoom or whatever virtual platform. I do believe that outside of Dane County, there are certainly in-person meetings that are taking place. But off the top of my head, I'm not aware of any municipality that's having in-person meetings in Dane County.
It seems as if the larger the community becomes, and we might be sort of at that threshold, the larger the community is, the more potential there is for, you know, a very large audience at a meeting. And that's, that's what you, that's what you worry about from an exposure perspective as well as an accommodation perspective. So, you know, we peter on the brink of that size concern, I guess.
Okay, Erin, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd also love to be in person. Sorry, my, something just rang on my screen. Went for FaceTime. I think we should definitely probably be the most responsive we can in this moment. I guess just, I had an idea, you know, if the concern of people at a public hearing needing access or internet, maybe we could put that and provide a space where someone could watch the meeting or call in. Put those libraries or Village Center versus all of us physically being there.
I know some communities have set up a public viewing space. The meetings are all Zoom entirely, but there is a space with a screen that allows some sort of public interaction off-site. I haven't dug into it much, but I know that some have done that.
I just want us to help to put them in a position where if they want to speak at a meeting, they have to go outside of what their comfortable is. And I'm like, yeah.
Well, Nyla, tonight this question, we'll plan to report on that and offer some suggestions, solutions at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just have one comment with regards to this, and I'm going to look to Scott and Bill probably for an answer for me. So I received a text this morning. So as Village President, you get a lot of different things communicated to you. And this was the text, "Good morning. Do you think garage sales are going to bring in good attendance?" My comment to that is I have some concerns about garage sales only because our garage sales bring a lot of people in from different communities to our community. So I would assume we could give some advice right now to those holding garage sales as far as making sure of social distancing as well as wearing masks, since we do have that order in Dane County. But I do have a little concern with regards to this right now, especially people going through and touching things right before other people, so on and so forth. How do we, how do we give good advice out to our residents? Scott, maybe I'll have you go first.
I actually echo your concerns. As far as the garage sales go, that's been one of my biggest concerns during all of this is whether or not those garage sales are going to end up happening this year. The amount of people that it brings is absolutely unmatched anywhere. I was flabbergasted the first year I spent here and saw the garage sales that go on. But just, there's no, in my eyes, real good way to govern that besides just to get the word out. If you're going to do this, take heed of what other stores have done, other retail places. Put Xs on your driveway. Put Xs going up to where you're going to be taking the money. Make sure everybody's in masks and preferably goggles, things like that. Gloves are a really good idea to protect you and your family. If you think about this, for the last six months, we've been preaching to people not to hang out with anyone that's not in your immediate family if you don't have to. And now you're going to invite 300 people into your garage. It seems kind of counterintuitive to what we've been doing this whole time. I, for what it's worth for my money, I don't think it's really worth trying to even hold these things in light of everything that's going on. That's just my personal opinion. Take it for what you will. I just don't think there's a real good, true, safe way to hold something of this magnitude by any means. And I would even question personally, if anybody is coming together to hold something like this, is there any issues regarding that public health order in Dane County and the maximum gathering limits? And how are you going to enforce that? And how are you going to keep people following that kind of thing at a garage sale? I just, I personally think there's way too many negatives that don't really outweigh the positives. That's, that's me personally, if I'm speaking candid. So I guess, Bill, I'll let you kind of comment on that one as well.
He said it really well. We spend a lot of time trying to keep people away from each other. Now, how are we going to safely put them together unless they're following the safe guidelines that all the other businesses are? I mean, to me, it's a business event. It's, I know that it's historically been a social event and one that people really look forward to. But this is sort of, everything's been odd this year and change happens this year. And I, I'm just as nervous as Scott is, I think.
Brian, there's nothing that we can do, I'm assuming, to, I mean, if people want to have a garage sale, they can have a garage sale. Is that correct?
Yeah, so this is not a village-sponsored event. This is just essentially something that happens. I guess I'm not, I haven't looked at whether or not this would be compliant with the Dane County order. Assuming this is something that individuals just hold on their own, then it's simply an enforcement issue. And, you know, I've heard that Dane, I mean, Dane County, I think, is really kind of taking the lead on enforcement. My experience over the last six months is that if Dane County is informed that something is going on, that Dane County believes is in violation of the order, they will, they will enforce. And so that would essentially, and exactly what Dane County would do, I'm not sure. But there's definitely the possibility of Dane County enforcement if they believe it violates their order.
Okay, so that said, I just wanted to get that out into the public. If people are watching and/or Roberta probably will write something about this in the paper. I think it's important that people stay as safe as they possibly can, as well as having people come in from other communities. I think that's like exactly what we're trying to prevent from a spread perspective. So enough said on that. Any other comments regarding COVID? Gary Hertzberg?
Hey, Chris, I'm just wondering, and again, it's a tough position to be in. But, I mean, would we want some type of just general recommendation from Scott or from the Village Board? You know, this garage sale thing, you know, I hear about it. And, you know, they still talk about the Wannakee Garage Sales. It's almost they're like they're promoting it. Do we want to come out, at least in the Tribune or something, and basically say, you know what? This is probably doesn't really meet the Dane County order and we're concerned and hope everyone's safe. And I don't know. I just don't want to have this day show up, whatever day this is going to be, and have, you know, like Scott said, 200, 300 people wandering the streets.
Phil?
Yeah, I would echo what Gary says. In fact, I would like to make a motion that we release a notice recommending that people withhold from holding garage sales until the epidemic is flattened the curve, say to speak, until we get further advice from our public health authorities, et cetera.
Okay, so.
Not that it's official, but it's our recommendation.
Brian, can we be doing that? I don't know if we can be making any motions.
Well, we don't have any, for this agenda item, we don't have it listed as the potential to take action.
I'm just talking about a COVID update here as far as we're getting the COVID update. And this is something that's happening in our community. I really want our community to understand that it's a dangerous thing that's taking place. I also don't want to tell citizens what they can and can't do within their own home. That's just me personally with regards to this. So.
Yeah, before Phil, before Philip spoke up, I was going to say that the village can certainly put together a communication of caution in regards to garage sales. When is the apparent coordinated weekend? Is it this coming? When, when is the apparent coordinated weekend? Is it this coming? Okay. So I think, um, Scott, Russell, why don't you and I connect tomorrow? If you could reach out to me and let's assemble, uh, uh, an official communication from the village with, with, um, some appropriate messages.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. All right. Any other COVID related comments before we move on? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move on to number two, discuss and take action resolution to grant a third extension of the declaration of emergency in the village of Wannakee and continuation of a joint executive authority. Brian or Todd?
Sure. Sure. So this, um, this is now the fourth time that this resolution will come back before you. I think there was a discussion in the July meeting of whether or not we wanted to extend it longer. And I, I believe many of the comments by board members was no, let's, let's keep the extension in July until the point we're at right now, because we like to have this come back to the village board and make sure that we want to continue to, uh, adopt this resolution. But as I've said at previous meetings, this is not, you know, a stay at home order or anything of that nature. What it does is it actually, you know, in part gets at the issue that Nyla was talking about on a different agenda item, which is there's language in the resolution, uh, indicating that we want all village departments to continue to monitor their costs and segregate costs that may relate to COVID so that we can try to, at some point in time in the future, when it's appropriate, seek reimbursement from either the federal or state government. It also contains, uh, language regarding the declaration of emergency and executive authority that actually kind of ties into the next agenda item. So it's just a continuation of what you've done in previous months. And, um, I think village staff believes it's appropriate, this extension would go until mid-November, uh, appropriate for all of the reasons that have been discussed earlier in this village board meeting regarding, uh, COVID-19.
Okay, board members, any comments? Please raise your hand if you have a comment. Nyla.
I have a question, um, I think for Brian. Right now it seems to be a rather broad scope of what the emergency authorization allows. I'm wondering if that can be narrowed to, um, affect emergency direct, directly or emergency COVID-19 directly affecting public health and emergency, um, COVID-19 finances.
So I, I mean, this can be narrowed if you'd like. Um, I guess the, are, are you saying then that you would only want? What, what aspect of it do you, do you want narrowed? And I, and I guess maybe the easier way for me to do is, is so I can just kind of, I have the statute up here.
Okay. I can give you an example.
Okay.
Okay. I, I would have never thought of this except something that happened at the last meeting. And due to the, um, information I received, I asked a question at the last meeting and the question was answered and I guess it wasn't answered correctly. So then number three, I don't know how to bring this up without reading it to you, uh, was discuss and take action to ratify village president, emergency allowance of variation from sign code regulations related to get out and try banners to be placed on private property, which seems to be a very small thing, except for it's being done with president, uh, the village president, emergency allowance. And to me, it's a very small item. But when I look at the emergency allowance being used, that's where the question came up. So do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah. And so, um, so the, the, the language in the statute that we've relied on for the previous resolutions, it, it's essentially kind of twofold. You, you, it, it talks about what power the governmental body has. And then essentially in between the time periods that the governmental body meets, the municipality, and in this case, the village has done this, can give as executive authority um, to its chief executive officer. Here, the resolution that we have has given that power to, to Todd and, and to Chris. But so when you go back to what, what is our general power for the local declaration of state of emergency? It talks about, um, for the body to do whatever is necessary and expedient for the health, safety, protection and welfare of persons and property. Um, and so that's very broad and that, for example, covers, in my opinion, you know, different things that municipalities, including the village of Wannakee, has done in related to, let's say, financial issues, uh, for local businesses and ways to try to, um, assist local businesses. You, you, if the village board wants to, it can certainly narrow the scope of that power. So that, for example, any action that's taken by the village board or, you know, in between the meetings by, by Chris or Todd is limited to, let's say, just health issues. If, if, if a major health issue comes up, um, you, you certainly have the ability to do that. Um, and, and essentially not exercise all the powers that are granted to you under the state statutes.
Okay. The, what I'm, what I'm wondering is, is if what we have that we're using now is too open because something that was discussed at a previous meeting and voted on with that information being part of what we voted on was changed without the board voting on it. And so I, I see this whole thing as being too broad of a, it, it covers way too many possibilities.
Well, I would just, I mean, the other alternative is, and obviously this is a decision for the board. The other alternative is to maintain the broad authority for the village pursuant to statutes, but not necessarily allow administrative authority to be taken. And in other words, everything has to be done by the village board. I mean, that's another, and, and obviously you can continue to do with the resolution that you have now. But that's also something that's in light of your comments, Nyla. That's something that you could, the board could also contemplate. Um, because I, I have to, my recollection of what the action that was taken at the last village board meeting is a little unclear. I mean, my rec, I, I do remember something about, I think, a financial contribution made, made by the village. I didn't, don't recall, and I'm not saying that, that I'm right or, or anything. I just don't recall the discussion about, specific discussion about signs. Um, that, that being said, I, I, I don't want to go too far into the next agenda item. But the, the, whenever there is administrative action that is taken under the, the resolution that was adopted by the village board and the statutes, it is coming back to the village board now. And the village board has the ability to go in a different direction. And that doesn't mean that Todd or Chris did anything inappropriate. That just means that the village board is ultimately the one that gets, is the, that makes the decision.
If, if I remember correctly, Nyla, just to make sure I'm, I'm clear on what your concern was from the last meeting is, I think you asked, uh, straight out, will the signs be legally constructed and installed?
Will they be installed according to village specifications and ordinances?
Right. Yep. Yeah, I remember you asking that.
The answer was yes, absolutely.
And I think that, I don't recall who, who particularly answered the question. It may have been working with the people presenting the GOAT proposal. But, um, but I do recall you asking if they'd be installed, installed legally.
And my, my comment about that is, um, in the event that someone doesn't have an immediate answer, all they have to do is say they don't know, um, to, for, and it wasn't that big of a part of what I voted on. But it, some things, if it comes up in certain ways, it can make a determining factor in how a person may vote. Um, so I guess it's concerning to me that what was, was an answer at a board meeting wasn't the truthful answer or, you know, I, I don't know why, you know, I received the answer that I did. And then a decision was ma, an executive decision was made to basically, I see it as, and maybe this is too strong, but I see it as rewarding something, an answer that wasn't what it, you know, what it was stated as.
Yeah, I'll let, I can let, I'll let the village president speak to, uh, on the next item about the decision to grant an exception. But as for whether it was the staff or the, um, uh, others involved in the GOAT program, to the extent that we were aware at our meeting two weeks ago, Nyla, it was going to be installed legally, meeting all regulations, et cetera. So I, I, I wouldn't, whomever it was that mentioned that back to you. I think that was our understanding at the time.
Thank you.
Brian, go ahead.
I would just say, you know, Nyla, in light of the comments that you've made, it, it, to the extent that the resolution is going to be changed, and it certainly can be changed by the village board, to me, it, it doesn't seem like, you, you correct me if I'm wrong. It doesn't seem like you have a concern necessarily with the village board exercising powers within, uh, under the statute. It's, it's more the concern related to things that would happen in between village board meetings that would be taken administratively.
That's correct.
And if that's the case, the, you know, the, you know, to the extent the village board wants to, the resolution can certainly be amended to, um, essentially remove, um, the, or remove or modify the language that is giving the village president and the village administrator the power, the ability to have joint executive authority to implement measures they determine to be necessary in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. I guess what I'm suggesting is I would, I would, I would recommend against taking away village board powers if, if the resolution is going to be modified and I would focus on that second issue.
That's what I'm looking at. And, you know, I, I'm only one person, but when, I would have never thought of it if this situation wouldn't have come up.
Okay, board members, comments with regards to this and or Nyla's suggestions? Raise your hand, please, if you have any. Okay, seeing none, um, then we would need a motion either to approve the resolution. Go ahead, Kristin.
I was going to make the motion to approve the resolution to grant a third extension of the declaration of emergency in the village of Wannakee and the continuation of joint executive authority.
And I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please. Caitlin.
Kristen Rungy.
Aye.
Phil Random.
Aye.
Chris Alner.
Aye.
Bill Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Aye.
Gary Hertzberg.
Aye.
Nyla Fry.
Nay.
Motion passes.
Okay. Then moving on to item number three, discuss and take action to ratify village president, emergency allowance of variation from sign code regulations related to get out and try banners to be placed on private property. So I wrote this down and made sure that, um, I'm, I'm stating this clearly because we did have some residents ask me about this as well as Nyla bringing this up beforehand. So this, this is, uh, my recollection and everything that is, is I'm going to put forward to you. So in late August, I was contacted by Ellen Chafe and Jennifer Chasper regarding installation and placement of get out and try Wannakee banners in the village. They told me that timing was important to help our business community and that they were hoping to start working on the production of the banners as soon as possible. I contacted the village attorney to determine if resolutions previously approved by the village board related to COVID-19 and the state of emergency gave me the authority as village president to authorize Ellen and Jennifer to proceed with the banners. The village attorney stated that I did have this authority, but also suggested placing the item on the agenda for this board meeting for action by the board. In the interim, I informed Jennifer and Ellen that due to the deep and devastating impacts of COVID, I would approve the banner request with the understanding that village staff confirms sightline safety of the, of the locations and other, any other safety concerns. I also thank Jennifer and Ellen for working to help our business community and citizens, uh, especially during this time of COVID where we have huge stress on our small business community. I informed that this would be on the village board agenda for tonight's meeting. And, um, within those public comments that we had, um, that were to me, I did forward those to our village attorney. And if, if, uh, Brian, if you have any other comments you'd want to add at this point, um, feel free to do so at this point.
Sure. So this agenda item is, um, page 38 of your, um, packet. And I, I, I know, you know, the, the, the first sentence there talks about, um, which may exceed code limitations. Because I'm actually going to suggest, I'm going to suggest a different motion right now than I'm obviously willing to answer whatever questions you have. But I also want to talk about the statute a little bit more, uh, following up on the last, um, discussion item and also talk about our code. Because I've, I've seen some comments suggesting that what we're doing tonight is potentially, you know, inconsistent with the code or we're suspending our sign ordinance in light of this. And, and I, I'm, I don't agree with that and I'm going to tell you, and tell you why. But let me just tell you what the mo, what my suggested motion would be. It would be motion to approve the placement of the four get out and try Wannakee banners at the four locations, uh, identified for not longer than 30 days and with the banners being not larger than four feet by eight feet. So this is, my understanding is where these signs would be located is they would all be located on private property and none of the signs are going to be in the road right of way. And none of the signs are going to create vision issues. And so, and, and that's also my understanding that the anticipated installation date is on or approximately September 14th and that they would, they would be there for 30 days. And so the, the 30-day requirements and the fact that they would be on private property and not located within our road right of way is all consistent with our ordinance. Now, the, why, why would you, if the village board does this, why would it do it? I mean, my thought is if, if the village board is going to approve it, it's going to approve it based on the resolutions that we've adopted and the statutory power that we have to help local businesses due to the extraordinary and unprecedented circumstances caused by COVID-19. And all you have to do is turn on television these days and just about every single time somebody talks about the virus, they use the phrase extraordinary and or unprecedented. And when you, I already talked about this on the earlier agenda item. But the power that is granted to the village board as a result of the resolutions that we've adopted is its emergency power includes general authority to order whatever is necessary and expedient for the health, safety, protection and welfare of persons and property within the village. We've been told that our village businesses are suffering. I, I think that that goes without saying that that's true. My understanding is the sole purpose for these banners is to try to assist all businesses in the village. So I think it clearly falls within the statutory powers. Now, there is actually language within our village code that specifically allows this type of banner or, or sign. We, we've, my, my understanding is we've seen these with, for example, like WannaFest. We've seen larger temporary signs with WannaFest. We've seen them with WannaBul. Now, I, I don't necessarily want to rely on this code language because quite frankly, I think that the code language is not broad enough to cover or is, is, it is broad enough to cover, but it doesn't truly cover what you're doing now. Because that deals, that code language deals with special events or similar special informational purposes. It talks about the action being taken by the zoning administrator and not by the village board. So do, does this fit within this section of the code? And it's 133 dash 1032 subsection nine. I, I, I think it does. Um, and that, and essentially what that code language says is for these particular signs, you would not need a permit as long as it's approved by the zoning administrator. But I, I stepped back and I don't necessarily think that that truly captures what you're doing. Because I think what, if you, if you approve this, what, what you're doing really isn't because of that code language. It's because of the extraordinary circumstances that we're facing as a result of COVID. Um, and so that's a long-winded way, I'm sorry, of saying, um, I don't think, if you approve this, I don't think that you're violating your code. I think there is code language that would allow you to do this, but I think this is bigger than the code. And the statutory language that we've talked about clearly, I think, allows you to do this in light of the virus.
Okay, Brian, thank you. Um, Ellen or Jennifer, do you want to comment at all in regards to, uh, Nyla made some comments within the last gen, board agenda item. And, um, when you came to me, I, I believe this was after that meeting. So, um, when we talked about the, the, the size of the signs and really that's what's at issue here, um, the placement where there are sightlines, all of that is fine. Um, but the size of the signs is what was in, in question here. So if you guys could maybe share, um, that discussion and, and why the size of the signs specifically? So Jennifer, you're on mute still.
There we go.
There you go.
Sorry, Chris. Thank you. Um, and thank you, Brian, for those comments. Um, I much appreciate them and your analysis there. Um, yes. So the questions at hand, the last, um, the question that was asked at the last meeting had to do with, are we following, um, city ordinances? The answer is yes. Now, with regards to the sign, we're obviously go through a creative process. We were looking at different options and a design came up. It was not within the, at that time, we looked at what the ordinances were and we asked for, is there a way for these to be produced in this way, especially given the, the, all the other legal sides of things that we are looking at with regards to, not legal, sorry, with regards to where they were being placed and whatnot. And I had no idea with regards to any executive orders at the time that were in place. That was not of my knowledge. So I simply was asking for, saying this is our design, this is why. And as you know, what the purpose of the entire campaign has been from the get-go, which has been two, over two months in the making, with regards to the struggles our businesses are having, and as you know, several have closed even since the last meeting. Big businesses have closed, more on the brink of closing. So as far as the design and size goes, it had to do with creative process. I was not going to go ahead and put something up that was not within city ordinance and non-compliant. Hence my letter to you, Chris. And it went forward from there. Since then, I, we've been in contact with a professional installer. We're in the process of making sure, not only with the line of sight, as is the village requirement, but also with regards to the utilities not being tapped into, or staked into. So all of those processes are being complied with.
Okay, thank you. Ellen, any comments? You're also on mute.
I'm on mute. Okay.
Oh wait, Phil, Phil.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought you were saying I was on, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I lost the screen there for a while. Yeah, so just to echo exactly what, what Jennifer said, back when the initial proposal came through a couple of weeks ago, you know, we hadn't really put the creative side together on the banners and such. And through that process, we realized how important it was to have a good-looking banner that could be read safely and in good spots and, and that, and we certainly didn't know about any special executive order ability at that time. So when Jennifer said, yes, we would be following those rules, we had every intention to do so, obviously. But in our discussions between Jennifer and I, I just said, well, I wonder if there's any type of special accommodation in light of what we're dealing with, which is extraordinary circumstances due to COVID. We're trying to help our businesses. We're putting a lot of effort into this marketing plan. And I just, I didn't even know, and I, I had reached out to Chris and found out that that was a possibility. So, you know, we did everything very open and forthright. We were, we were kind of glad to hear that this was a possibility because it's, it's very hard to put up banners and put them in the ground. We've even gone as far as to get special professional help. We're working with Digger's Hotline. We have a local business qualifying that's helping us put them in the correct way. So we've really done everything that we can to, to do right by this. And, and it's really ultimately to kick off a marketing campaign that's hopefully going to help our businesses that are hurting very badly. When we just gave out over 60 business packs, when people came to the chamber, we had really long heartfelt discussions with some of our businesses and they are hurting and some do not even know if they will be here next month. So that's, that's really sad to hear and it, and we just want to do our part to help them. And this is one small part for a kickoff of something that's really important that's hopefully going to be make an impact in the next couple of months to take us through the new year.
So thanks, Ellen. I, I'll just echo one, one thing that's important. When, when I was considering this, it's not just the businesses that I'm concerned with. It's our citizens too, because many of them work within these businesses as well as they have services that they provide for our community that would no longer be there potentially. That, that's important to me. And you know, I fully support what you guys are doing and I appreciate the fact that you're doing it with the village and, you know, getting this accomplished. That said, board members, do you have any other comments that you'd like to make? Phil?
Yes, thank you. I certainly think these fall into the category like of the Wanafest or Oktoberfest banners, which we don't put on private property. We put them in the parks. We put them on the school property, et cetera. So I think they certainly fall in that category. What I don't think we should do in support of the businesses is lift any restrictions like on sandwich board signs that they set out in right of ways and et cetera, and leave out overnight and et cetera. I don't think we should relax things like that. Some of the, some of the businesses have been putting out sandwich boards and leaving them out all night, not taking them in like they're supposed to, et cetera. So I also don't think, like, in our business where we're on a highway, we should take advantage of this and add extra flutter, et cetera. But these, these, for my, for my vote, for my thinking, fall in the line of Oktoberfest, Wanafest, Wanaboom, et cetera, that type of promotion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Any others? Please raise your hand. Kristin.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer and Ellen, for working on behalf of the businesses. It takes, as you guys know, decades to get a vibrant business community formed and the care and feeding of that community is really important right now. So I appreciate you guys doing this.
Thanks, Kristin. Any others? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, then we would look for the motion. Do you need to have the motion that Brian read back? Brian, do you want to, want you to read that one more time for the board members?
Motion to approve placement of four get out and try Wanakee banners at the four locations identified for not longer than 30 days and with the banners not being larger than four feet by eight feet in size.
All moved.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg?
I second that.
Okay, actually, I had Bill Random second it first, so I'm going to give that to him. Any other comments from board members? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, Caitlin.
Erin Moran.
Aye.
Gary Hertzberg.
Aye.
Nyla Fry.
Nay.
Kristen Rungy.
Aye.
Phil Random.
Aye.
Chris Elner.
Aye.
Bill Williams.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer and Ellen, for being here.
Thank you. And look forward to GOATWANAKEE.COM next week. There's some really awesome things to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have discuss and take action on replacement of police canine. I see Chief Kreisman's here. Are you introducing this?
I think Renee was going to introduce it.
Um, yeah, I can, I can just give a brief introduction. Adam can talk more about the canine itself. But we are bringing this to the board because there were some donations received when we originally got Thoro a couple of years ago. And we are hoping that we can use those toward getting a new canine. Do you want to talk about the canine itself, Adam?
Yeah, really, obviously Thoro passed away unexpectedly. He was the second canine since our program has started. And we'd like to move forward. I didn't feel comfortable going back to the community for donations because they were so generous the last time. And so I reached out to Renee to check if there was some, some money left over. And it turns out that we were, we were extremely fortunate and our community was very giving at that time, and we had some money left over. So I would, I would like to move forward with replacing Thoro. We have secured a vendor and we can have an officer go out to training in October and, and the dog would be on the road by early November would be our goal. So that's why we're here today and not waiting until the end of the year. The dog itself would be very much like the last one, a Labrador that's trained in narcotics detection and tracking. The only difference would be, right now, we're going to hold off on training him in marijuana detection, mostly to the fact that if marijuana became legalized, you cannot untrain that. So really, the dog would probably have to retire at that point. So right now, we're going to, we're going to stay away from that and not train the dog in marijuana. It is something we could add down the road if we decided to, but I just don't think that would be in our best interest right now. So just want to keep the program going. Obviously, it's, it's been very successful for us and would look for support from you guys to do that.
So I was just going to say, the reason that we're bringing it to the board. So back when we obtained Thoro in 2016, there was, there were these excess donations and even into early 17. We did not formally carry those over at the time. But they were earmarked for this program. That was just kind of an oversight mostly on my part. But the, the donations were received and we, now going forward, if this is approved, we will do a formal carryover at the end of the year when we do our other budget carryovers so that any remaining funds would stay within the canine program from year to year.
Okay, thanks, Renee. Any questions from board members, either Renee or Chief Kreisman? Nyla?
I just wanted to say I'm sorry to hear about Thoro. I met him when I was at the Citizens Academy and I'm sorry that he, he left early, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Please raise your hand. Okay, I just have one for chief. Chief, do we have a volunteer already from this, from the force here who wants to do this?
Yeah, we do. We actually had two people that were, were interested and, and picked one of them to move forward. He's excited to go as soon as we can get this okayed. I've talked to the vendor already. We have a spot reserved and we already have the car in place. We, Bill was nice enough to store the, the squad car, which is equipped strictly for the canine out at the streets garage while we kind of figured out what the steps moving forward would be. So we're kind of, we're ready to go and excited. Everybody's excited, I think, and looking forward to having a dog around the PD again.
Very good. With that, I am going to make the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, actually, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Erin.
Just, what's the average career? Like, how long do they, can they train on?
Yeah. Well, typically, I mean, that depends a little bit on the health and the drive. I mean, we'd like to see them work until they're at least between nine and 10 years old typically. So obviously, Thoro's passing was very unexpected due to some health issues and, and most of those vendors actually carry a guarantee on some health issues, but not, I have not seen one that goes past two years. So unfortunately, we, we had just passed Thoro's not, not long before he passed, so.
Okay. Thanks, Erin. So I have a motion. Nyla had the second. Any other comments? Raise your hand. Okay, roll call vote, please, Caitlin.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Elner.
Yes.
Bill Williams.
Phil, you're muted.
Yes.
There you go.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Chief, thanks, Renee.
Yep, thank you, everyone.
Discuss and take action on racism, tolerance, and equality in the Wanakee community. Todd.
Okay, I had some information in your packet. What I actually did was I duplicated what you saw in a prior packet. I felt that was important enough for citizens to be aware of the work we've done, the information we've gathered, to put that in there again. Partly also because that status report you saw from, I think it was end of July, many of those things are still underway in terms of our, our response to racism, tolerance, and equality. I would mention that the University City Year application was submitted. Hope, Bill, I tried to connect with you before I sent it off because I wanted to make sure I properly worded your mental, the mental health impact project you wanted. We weren't able to connect. You probably were making a baby enter the world or who knows what. And they don't look good. Okay, good. Thank you. All right, I'm glad. And so that's out there. I've touched base with both Westport and the school district, asking about engagement with them in our work. Both Tom Wilson and Randy Gutenberg expressed interest in working with us in one way, shape, or form. Staff are doing a number of things that you already saw on the agenda. And if, I hope all of you somehow follow Create Wanakee, the Wanakee Public Library, and the Wanakee Neighborhood Connection by either reading the newsletters or following them on Facebook. Because there is a lot continual work being done day after day by these groups towards addressing these issues. So I'm really encouraged by that. If you haven't also gotten, begin following the Wanna Talk Diversity Facebook group. There's, and there's been some spinoffs on that for Spanish-speaking members of our community and other things. There's just so much positive energy at work. Yeah, I'm really pleased to have seen the way our community has stepped up in so many ways. And I know that all of you, all seven of you have had your one-on-one meeting with Antonio and Betsy. We have our first meeting together with them scheduled for October 7th. And I think we're working, Kylie might be working with all of you to come up with a certain date for our second meeting with them. I just take one extra moment to talk about sort of our, if you recall, our initial action to this was this working statement. It's, it's almost hard to remember even now because so much is going on in between. And we danced around the subject of passing a resolution and making a firm community statement. At the time, we were talking about making statements. I also heard public comments that words are just the words. We'll see whether anything actually happens. I'll tell you that I've kind of taken the route of making things happen as have a lot of people in our community. We've just simply gotten to work. And I don't want to dismiss that the board, you guys may very well want to be very definitive with a statement and perhaps a broader resolution. But, but let me offer that perhaps upon conclusion of our work with Betsy and Antonio, that that may be the perfect moment for the board after having done some soul-searching work and absorbing more new information, both individually as well as together, that at that second meeting with Betsy and Antonio would be a prime time to solidify your position as a village board. That might culminate in some sort of statement or resolution. If you care to move more promptly on that, I'm all ears. I'm happy to do what you'd like. But it just seems like that's setting up so well for you as a seven-member public body to, to come out with a very definitive message as a board. So I'm interested in your thoughts on that, as well as any questions you might have about the work that we're doing.
Board members, Nyla, go ahead. You saw your name first.
I think it's a learning process and then we work with Betsy and Antonio. We will even learn more and it seems sometimes that it's taking us a long time to come up with a statement, but I think it will be better the more we learn.
Okay, thanks, Nyla. Any other comments? Kristin?
Yeah, so when we first, you know, were asked to address the issue, kind of two things happened when we were in that conversation. We, you know, we had a statement that was specific to the incident. And then there was this, it was one of the few times we had the chat box open and that started scrolling and we started seeing community member feedback almost immediately saying that, that some of the people that were listening in on the call wanted more than just a statement against, against the particular, particular incident with the kids who were driving around with the windows rolled down yelling racial epithets out the window. So, so, so when we're talking about making a statement, are we talking about, can, you know, forcefully condemning that incident? Or are we talking about a broader statement on inclusion? Or have those two things kind of merged in to one? I'm at, and I'm posing this because I don't know that we've necessarily thought that hard about it. Or maybe we have. But when I was at the last meeting that I was able to attend with the diversity group, you know, the people had some questions of like, why hasn't the board condemned that incident? And I said, well, individually, everybody did say they condemn it, but we have not as a board voted to condemn that particular incident. So I just want to be clear that when we're talking about the statement we're making, are we, are we combining those two things into one? Are we looking at making two different statements? Those are big questions and hard questions.
So I'm, I'm not sure if you're asking me that question or not, Kristin.
I'm asking everyone. Yeah, I think, like, you know.
Great.
Right.
I think we're looking, I mean, my, my opinion on this is that we did condemn it. We didn't do a formal condemnation from the entire board. Um, we did each individually do that. And I think putting together our entire plan of action and statement is, is going to be all-inclusive um, to this. That, that, that's my goal with this. Um, I, I think that we are, as a board, are the leaders of the community, but we are just part of the community. And I, I feel that during a pandemic and COVID where meetings can't really take place and socialization isn't taking place, I think we're moving really fast um, with what we've already started. Uh, and Todd's work and our staff work and, and our work um, within in this. Um, and it will continue uh, to grow faster and faster. And with people in the community, I think, I think it's hard to interact right now. It just really is. We talked about garage sales and we can't, you know, that this is a, a dangerous time with that. Getting out, talking to people is, is something that I love to do, but I have to be cautious about what I'm doing when I'm doing it, um, which makes it difficult. So that, that's my opinion on your question and I'm not sure if that's answering how you were looking, but that's, that's my thoughts.
So when I go to the next meeting on Thursday, if they ask again, why hasn't the board condemned? Are we okay with me saying, because I don't want to, I'm like really nervous about speaking on behalf of the board, is, are we okay with me saying everyone individually did condemn it? We're issuing a broader statement, including that incident and an incident and, and a broader statement on diversity at that second meeting?
So I'm looking out for the board.
On the spot at that meeting about this and I'm a little bit like, I, you know, I feel like I need an answer um, that, that is not just my opinion.
So I, I don't want to speak for any one of you, just like Kristin doesn't want to speak for you. So this is, this is kind of where you guys have your opportunity to say, yeah, we condemn that or I condemn that. I condemn that. And in that process, that would mean that the board condemns that. I think at the time, we wanted the legal parts of things to go through the process and, and, and see what was going to happen with that. That was important as far as I was concerned. Before we started condemning, we didn't know all the facts of the case either um, at that time. Um, I, I'm comfortable in saying that I condemned it uh, and I still do, but I think you guys would all need to say that. Or if you're not, then, then you need to say that as well. Nyla, go ahead.
I act, I can condemn the actions of the boys driving around in the truck, but I, I hate to put a time limit on the process because I want to get the best outcome that we can. And if we set a timeline and then we don't get there, then we're letting people down. So just, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, I, I think you're right on with that now. And I don't think we've set a timeline of when we have to be finished. I think this is going to be something that may go on um, forever, frankly, um, that we're going to be continuously working to be better as a community, better as people, um, as we always should be. Even before this, we should have been working to be better as people. So um, but I agree with you. There's, there should not be a timeline with it. Bill?
I'm so sorry that it isn't clear that I condemned it or that we haven't condemned it. That feels, that makes me feel a little sad somehow. I, I, I obviously it's clearly needs to be, to me, it's something that's uh, horrific and needs to be condemned, um, the event. So hopefully, if that's what needs to get the message through, that's, that's what we're saying, I'm saying anyway, so.
Erin?
Wait, did you say me?
Yes, Erin.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'll, exactly what Bill just said, that if that wasn't clear, I think we should make that more clear. I have been under the assumption that our point for, you know, saying it's a working statement was that like, we're committed to working on these things and that we're not just, yeah, offering words and saying that, and we're going to get better. So I think maybe any future statement maybe could be rolled into like some sort of our strategic plan that we have been working on and like setting us up for more long-term. Like this is a forever thing in a way that like, we should only be evaluating and working harder. If it's not clear already, I think we should make them more clear though.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yeah, Chris, again, I mean, I thought we all condemned it, but I have to go back and look at the, look at the meeting, but I thought we all had. And I'm not so sure that we need to wait to come out as a board and just say, hey, yeah. I mean, that was a terrible, terrible thing. It should have never happened and, you know. And if, if that's needed to, to make people in the community feel I don't know, feel better about that issue, uh, I don't have a problem doing it tonight. Because I think we've all said it before, but I, I understand if we want to kind of craft it into a larger message that we've discussed.
Thanks Gary. Phil?
I condemn this also and, but I'll have to defend my position. You know, I, I think I made a statement that I condemned it at, at the meeting, but I wouldn't think that we would have to address that publicly to your committee, Erin. Or I'm sorry, Kristin. Just like we wouldn't, shouldn't have to can, uh, address the fact that somebody does an inappropriate thing on a chalkboard down at, uh, on South Street. Yes, it's wrong and yes, we condemn it, but it's part of the whole thing that we're trying to get corrected. I guess, I said that the wrong way, but yeah, I'm against it. And I was very appalled that they could even think of doing something like that.
Nyla, go ahead, Nyla.
I, I think we need a statement because then it's, then it's known that it's not tolerated, it's not going to be accepted and it's not appreciated. And unless we make that statement, it's left, left hanging and I don't think we should leave it hanging. Um, we need to work on something. I'm not saying, you know, it will always be, it may be a work in progress and it may involve over time, but we need to have a starting point. I didn't mean to say that we don't need a statement. We definitely need a statement, but hopefully it will evolve over time as needed, but we, I definitely think we need to do something.
So with that, hold on a sec. With that said, I mean, I am willing to put, uh, uh, I, I don't know if we can just do a motion right here tonight, Todd. It says discuss and take action, so we can take an action here. Is that correct?
Can, yes, you can.
So um, I'm just not sure how to word it right now. As far as, um, you know, we as a village board, what's the word I want to say here? What, how do we want to do this? For the events that occurred on, and I don't remember the date, involving our
Well, let me suggest this, Chris. You, you, you all said what you've said several weeks ago. I, I explicitly remember every one of you condemning the, the, the George Floyd murder and the, the four kids yelling racial epithets. I re, I recall it clearly. You were very clear and everybody who I've spoken with, I've been clear that the village board condemns these actions. And that hasn't stopped your organization from using that as an absolute starting point and we've gone to work. It, so with that said, um, Chris, why don't we prepare for, it's just two weeks and we can be absolutely certain that a statement will be specifically listed on the agenda and final action will be taken to make that official as well. But as far as I'm concerned and Kristin, maybe as far as you can be concerned in speaking with the Wanna Talk Diversity Group, that, that is officially known um, as the way that the board members feel and believe.
That's, that's helpful. I, I, you know, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board and I'll direct them to tonight's video and then the earlier video as well when they, if they question again. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you Kristin. And uh, so Will, if everybody's in agreement, then two weeks, uh, we can probably have something drawn up to that effect that we can have an official statement from the entire board versus just each of our own individual. Sound good? Everybody good? Thumbs up? Okay, very good. All right. Any other comments in regards to, Todd, thanks for putting all the guests together too. This is a lot of information to compile. I, I really like how we're doing this and, and putting this out into the community, showing what we're doing, um, and how we're going about doing it and all the work that is being put into it. So I appreciate all of your efforts, um, as well as staff in doing that.
Sure. I'll tell you one thing, Chris. I have met, I have met and engaged with people I have not yet before over the course of this and, and have made some really strong friends and found some really cool people in this village as a result. There's many more, I'm sure.
Absolutely. So, okay, I am going to ask for one more motion and it cannot be Bill Random.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Erin.
Yeah, jumping back to the agenda item. Um, and I don't know if I'm just not reading it or if I've been looking at the screen for twelve hours straight, but is there, I guess, Todd, I'm thinking, you know how someone suggests that we put the survey out in Spanish too? Is there a place besides just generally contacting the village that someone has, you know, like a specific action or specific request of something we can do? Any direction on how? I guess that's just, doesn't make sense.
That, that we can do to further our work on racism, tolerance and equity?
Yeah, like.
Yeah.
Certain email or certain person we should contact.
Yeah, that's actually um, a proposal that I'm in the middle of. Um, Chris, you've, you've seen that I've bounced that off of you. And I would say I'll be prepared to present some additional concepts to you in two weeks as well, to address that specifically here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we need one more motion.
Move adjourned.
Motion by Bill Random.
Second.
Second by Kristin Rungy. Caitlin Steen.
Nyla Frye.
Aye.
Kristin Rungy.
Aye.
Bill Random.
Aye.
Chris Elner.
Aye.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Motion passes or adjourned.
Thank you everyone and stay safe.
Chris, tell Mrs. Elner's thank you for her first day at school.
Absolutely, sounds good.